All right, we are all ready. Good morning, everyone. It's eight thirty-two on Wednesday, June twenty-second. This is a special meeting, June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. This is a special meeting of the Board of Selectment. We will meet again next Tuesday, our regularly scheduled final meeting of the fiscal year. And but we wanted to get a few items out of the way today because next Tuesday will be a busy, busy agenda. So first item on our agenda this morning after our minutes from the last regular meeting on June seventh. Any comments or corrections on the minutes?
None, none here.
Move we approve the minutes?
Second.
All favor, I. We're taking public comments on the agenda. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments on the agenda topic scheduled for review and or vote comments. This is a hybrid meeting, I should have mentioned, so that we will take comments electronically if by email sent to B O S distribution at the Canada C T dot gov and we'll read them in the course of the meeting before the end of the meeting. Any, I don't see any members of the public here today, so that we will move on to the Mr. Calderella, we're gonna take up the revaluation contract.
Sebby.
Sebby, good morning.
Morning. Okay, it's time for the twenty twenty-three revaluation. We put the RFP out, we only got one bit out of all of them. One of the issues has been the companies have been having a hard time finding workers, experienced workers. So some of them have said they actually sharing some of the employees.
Is this a full eval or?
It's a full revaluation. It requires a full measure on list of all the homes. State guidelines have given us a little room as far as what is a full measure where we could do data mailers, measure the exterior that could be also considered as a full measure and list for the revaluation so that the state has kind of given us a little more leeway as far as trying to get into homes, people's properties.
So this is October one, two thousand twenty-three.
Correct.
And the work will begin when?
Uh, work will begin, um, it's probably gonna say around August of this year.
Oh.
Yep, because it's from sales. We usually analyze two-year sales, but we utilize about one-year sale, which is going to be from this October first, twenty twenty-two, all the way to October first, twenty twenty-three. So they're gonna start right away in a sense.
I'm sorry, so usually they do, we do two years, but this year it's one year, is that?
With, uh, to analyze the market, yes, yeah, we just to see trends where the market is going. Basically, we analyze, but then the values, the value set is of October first, twenty twenty-three.
Right, right.
As of that date, but we need at least a minimum of one year of sales to analyze, but sometimes we go back two years, just okay, what's the trends of the market certain years, not every year is gonna have sales, so that's why we're on the spread of the sales, basically.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, there could be a big difference between the real estate market today and the real estate market in October of this year.
Or next July.
Or no, or next July, correct.
So what happened this year or last year is irrelevant.
Correct. That's gonna be the gamble, you know, in a sense, um, we're open to at least if the market does take a dive, it's not as bad as uh, people are saying. Isn't the interest rates to keep going up, but uh, it, it's still gonna be based just on that year. I took it values is October first, twenty twenty-three. It's almost the same thing that happened to thousand and eight revale when the market crashed in December. And a lot of taxpayers are complaining, which is, I can't sell my house for that much, but our value was as of October first.
Right.
Unfortunately.
So have you remind us who municipal evaluation services in L L C is and who did we have last time?
Uh, we use the same company, did a good job. They also did a good job, uh, pockets taxpayers, giving out the information, whatever they needed, uh, spending the time for the formal hearings, the, they did a very good job as far as that goes to, um, the values were good. Um, so they were the only ones that bid, they're familiar with the town.
They're based in Fairfield?
Fairfield, correct, correct.
And they, and what's the plan for commercial properties?
Same thing, we want to do a full measure on list. Uh, we typically analyze all the income and expense statement forms that gives us the rental information, expenses and things like that.
We're gonna do any, 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 uh, actual appraisals, commercial property?
Uh, but I might choose to, that's something that, um, I will talk to you about. We could choose to have one or two properties specifically to do an appraisal, just to see, all right, how is this coming out? Uh, but that's, that's something that we're not required to do.
Years ago, we talked about doing a dozen.
Correct, correct, correct. We go as far as a dozen. It's a little more expensive. That's something that we have to discuss, um, in regards to that, but it's not required.
That sort of helps us avoid litigation from later. We're too far off.
Correct.
But that, so the fellow who did the revaluations, this company last time, the commercial guy, he's very good.
Yes, yes.
When you talk about litigation, you're talking about appeals.
Appeals.
Yeah, so which, which you, you're gonna get in any revale.
Correct.
What percentage? What's the typical percentage of?
Well, again, if the market stays the way it is, the feels probably gonna be maybe a hundred, hundred fifty. If the market dives, uh, we're looking at about three hundred to four hundred, not more.
Based upon past experience.
Based upon two thousand.
Yes, the market dictates in a sense, okay, you know, if the market still climbs and we come up with our values, we concentrate on valuing the properties, uh, between ninety-two, ninety-eight percent of fair market value. We're not trying to overshoot a value because it's mass appraisal. Because otherwise, a lot of them are gonna end up overvalued. So that's why we shoot between ninety, ninety-five percent. That's what the state allows us to do. There's guidelines we have to buy by, basically.
Right, yeah.
Yes. Any further questions for Seb?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. Uh, any differences from, so I read the, um, their R F P proposal. Any differences that you expect in terms of things like neighborhood delineation, uh, et cetera, where you are really pretty much gonna assume the same?
Currently, I don't see change.
Okay.
But again, once we analyze the sale data, that's, that's the key thing. That's what some neighbors might require to be delineated even further, um, just like we did in two thousand and eight for South Avenue. South Avenue, unfortunately, we just couldn't catch up to the sales, so we had to create its own neighbor on South Avenue, just the sales were going crazy. So anything off the South Avenue wasn't selling as good as, as South Avenue. So all depends what the market shows, yes, but that's open. Um, if it requires, we will do that.
Okay, all right, great. And then the, um, the, how are the revales? I just noted the history in terms of the, the revales, and I know we've had uh, MuniVal last year, or excuse me, it back in twenty eighteen. Um, so the increase is pretty substantial. Is that just kind of a going rate now? Is that?
Well, it's still within the range of twenty.
This is full versus the last time was computer.
Correct, last time, correct. It's, it's every ten years.
Right, and so you, you actually, the last full was also in twenty thirteen, and just, just for basis of comparison, you're comfortable with this number? I know we only got one.
Yes.
Response, okay. And then when you do have more than one response, um, for instance, in twenty eighteen, twenty thirteen, we haven't always gone with the lowest bidder. Tell me how you evaluate the selection of the, uh, the evaluators.
Well, typically, I, I give a recommendation, I go through all the bids, uh, pros and cons of each company.
Okay.
Um, and then at the end of the day, uh, I'll give you my, uh,
Recommendation.
Recommendation, but it's up to the selectmen.
Sure, yeah. No, I, I was just noting the, the previous ones, and so.
Yeah.
Understand that, okay. Thank you for that. No further questions.
Nope.
My move, we approve this contract with municipal evaluation services LLC for the two thousand twenty-three town vet revaluation, all real properties for an amount of three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
None here.
All favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Thanks. Okay, that brings us to, uh, food trucks. At the Steve Banker pool, and I learned something the other day. I didn't know Board of Selectmen have to approve the sale of anything in the parks.
Which is wonderful for you. So unfortunately, with, um, labor issues, trying to find people that were willing to work seven days a week and take care of the food concession, Apple Car has asked.
By the way, this is John Howe, oh, Parks Recreation interim director, soon to be full director.
Hope so. So with the apple carts not eating, they don't feel they're gonna be able to staff at seven days a week, so we're, we're hoping to do only one day, doing Tuesdays, having a food truck come in. We went to the, the food trucks that are working the Fourth of July fireworks and asked them who would be interested. We had two respond that are very interested in doing it. If we do one day, we'd, um, have them rotate weeks. So one would do it one week, the next, we'd do it the next week. And by, by doing that, if we need to go to a second day, that's why we're looking at approval for the second day, we could just have one, one day and one the next. We think it's a good alternative, will be something different for the, for the patrons of the pool. Um, we'd put the truck outside the pool gates, the, the sloping grass area. Um, we can put it outside the gates, but still put a couple pieces of fence so that there's no chance for a kid running out into a parking lot or anything like that, so. And then also on that, we've, for years, we've had problems keeping a food concession open at Kiwanis Park. Not sure if it's gonna work. We think we might have one vendor that would be interested in operating food truck down at Kiwanis Park, so we're looking for approval to have the ability to do that.
Was that recommended by the commission?
Yes, both of them were recommended by the commission. Okay.
So this is a park recreation commission request. Any further, any questions?
So the, um, the Kiwana suggestion, and you're, it would be one of these two, uh, truck vendors that you're currently talking to or something different?
They, they would not be interested. The only person we have interested in right now, um, still would have to go through all the permits in town and everything else.
Okay.
We want to have the ability to do this.
What? Okay, are you kidding or? Okay, um, okay, so that, that would be for Kiwana, so you'll come back to us on that one, is that right, or?
We, we'd like the ability to be able to move forward.
You wanna, I see, okay, very good. And, and is there any change to the contract then that we have with the apple cart, uh, vendor because they're changing their availability?
No, we're, we're hoping that we'll get, be able to get back out of this.
I see.
Labor issue, so and I believe this is the first year of a five-year contract, I might have.
Yeah, it's certainly more than one year.
It's more than one year.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay. What, what kind of food are they offering for the two carts?
Well, um, the, one of them is a taco truck. We figured Taco Tuesday would be perfect, and the other one has a wide variety, um, in, anything from Cajun to subs, but they all serve you know, chicken nuggets and things like that, so we think it would work out well.
And I think I also saw that this has to go through health department approval as well.
They have to get.
Be inspected, et cetera.
Yeah, that's why we started with the ones that are approved for the Fourth of July fireworks.
Great.
Because they, they met that standards or will meet that standard, so.
Very good, thank you.
Any questions?
None here.
I move, we approve the request from Parks and Recreation Commission to, uh, have food trucks at both the Steve Banker Pool and Kiwanis Park, as John does subscribe to us. Second.
Second here.
Further discussion, all favor?
Hi.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
We have another item?
I'm not leaving.
Okay. Purchase order requests for the parks and recreation.
Right, um, so this is pretty much our normal purchase order requests. Of course, recreation is in the pool, it's new to me, but the parks, it's this, um, it's basically the same as last year. There's been some increases here and there, um, you know, of, of no, like Tom Irwin, we've increased that budget line item number because there's more seed involved in there. So these are so we can have blanket purchase orders so we can do business. And then I separated out the pool and then kept everything recreation together. So this, this avoids having small contracts and small amounts approved by Kevin, and a lot of these are larger than that. I'll be glad to go through as much detail as you want, or.
So, so what fiscal year is this?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's just so starting July first.
That's what I thought.
Twenty-three fiscal year, yes.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
Right.
And this, this is, this, the money's all been approved through the budget process, yes. It's all operational money.
John, can you just remind us, or somebody remind me, um, over what, uh, price point, oh, it's we considering looking at, uh, multiple vendors before you decide on any one of these?
We, we try to do it on a lot of them. A lot of these ones are, um, are done through purchasing agreements, like, like the largest one in parks is, of course, Tom and Tom Irwin.
Right.
Um, and that's done through the Crog purchasing agreement. The prices are that way.
Okay.
So that we don't look at multiple vendors, and a lot of it has to do with local vendors when we can use them and everything, so. Um, exact price point, I, I look at it, if, if it's something that's questionable, we'll get multiple prices, even, even if we, if it's two thousand dollars, why not make sure that we're getting the best value?
So these, so when you actually, um, get these bills for, you know, pick one, J and J Pool, for example, do we see this in our report back, um, contracts under ten thousand, or this is the last time we'll see these?
It would be the last time you'd see them if you approved the blanket purchase orders, yes. I'll be glad to come back with anything that.
No, no, I just want to. Because some of these, we have seen the Tom Irwins and so forth come to us.
Tom Irwin was, the last year was the first year, we put it in the blanket purchase order request.
Okay.
But, and I'd be glad to come back with more detail on that. Um, on good news is, um, of that, of that budget amount, only four, four point one nine percent of that is actually pesticides of the hundred and fifty-five thousand, and we think we're making really good progress.
Is that lower than it was previously?
Oh, yeah.
I was, I have.
I think, I think we're like at ten percent. Now, part of that is the numbers increased some, which does, you know, but it's still, it's a good, good trend.
Okay.
So the seedens working.
The seedings working.
I think so.
Hear that.
Yep.
Great. No further questions.
You're good. This is a bit of a change up from what Steve did. I mean, I, no, I don't remember a lot of his contracts.
I'm not sure how he presented contracts to you, honestly.
Well, when we have the New Canaan Athletic Foundation.
That's right.
Player softball fee, I mean, that's not really a contract, and so there's some things in here that we're.
Yeah, and there's, there's some that are below the threshold amount for purchase orders.
Right.
Um, some depends on the type, the vendor, whether they want a formal purchase order from the town, even though on our end, we won't need one. If they want one, it's easier to have it approved.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, it can be kicked back from the finance department that we don't have approval for it. So that's, that's why you'll see some that are below those thresholds.
Some of these, um, with a person's name, for instance, for tennis, is that just the instructor or?
That is the company who is providing tennis clinics in the case of tennis.
Okay.
And it's in their name.
Okay.
So. And instead of coming back for each individual season, you know, like for the two seasons for tennis or three seasons, depending on how you look, look at it, we, we put them all together.
Okay, I move, we approve these, we're calling them blanket purchase orders for parks, one hundred seventy thousand, five oh four forty, pool, fifty two thousand, seven forty-five, and, and recreation, Lapin, Kiwanis and Civic Activities, five oh nine, one seventy-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
For, uh, for the discussion?
None here.
All favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Hey. Brings us to, uh, Tiger doing the wastewater treatment plant.
Morning, buddy.
Bill.
Morning, Bill.
Thank you, uh, for doing your special meeting upside a little bit this time of year. So we have, um, first on, unless here's the wastewater plant. Which one is it? Oh, here it is. So the transfer switch, uh, we bought these two, uh, few weeks back, and the request, we got another, uh, quote, so we reached out, spoke to Northeast Generator, who actually does a lot of generator work for us, and, uh, they came back with a number that was quite high, actually, one sixty-seven, six hundred for exact same work. Um, switchgear is very similar to what they're proposing to what the first one was proposing. Uh, went back to the first vendor, because his proposal expired, had to revise it, wanted a little bit, uh, because of equipment, I didn't have. So, uh, we'd like to move forward, uh, with your approval to get to switch in. The generator, um, that would be plugged into this particular switch, the, uh, emergency standby one, uh, is, it's being built now. It'd be delivered hopefully by the end of July, they're saying, beginning of August. Probably transportation is there, so, uh, so we'd like to get it going because we definitely want to, uh, fire up that building and improve our technology.
So how many buildings will have the switch in order to be able to use the mobile generator?
Well, we have, uh, we've been doing this program for a while. Uh, we have the firehouse, uh, police department, beat park, all the pumping stations. Um, this will now get the, um, wastewater treatment plant up, which also, if we share, share the load, shed the load a little bit, I can, uh, get the backup to work into the, uh, highway department too, if their generator went down. So I have some little bit of wiggle room down there to move things around. And, uh, we're gonna continue this program, I believe, with, uh, some other town buildings, town hall.
Is Huntington Power also building the mobile generator?
They're supplying the generator, yeah, they're, uh, they're the dealer for that manufacturer, yeah. Um, and, and it's good because they'll take full ownership of everything, and it's kind of like what I'd like to have. Um, I don't want finger pointing when there's electricity, high voltage involved, to be honest with you. So very confident that Huntington will problem handle this.
What's the price increase from the last time?
About, about two thousand dollars from, for Huntington, yeah.
What explains the, uh, the delta between the two bids?
I can speculate.
Um, I mean, it's three times.
Yeah, I know, I was.
Three X.
Well, I, you know, Huntington may be giving us a, a good price because they sold us a generator, and they want in on more projects to town New Canaan. Uh, Northeast may not have been too happy because I didn't get the generator, it's quarter million dollar piece of the project. The, the Northeast is very busy too. I know they're doing work for us now, and they're, they're very busy and manpower with them, so maybe they figured it just so, you know, I don't know if the number is a high number because they intended to be high number and just figure if we went, went great, if not, they're not, I, I can't answer them. Um, you know, I'm, I'm leaning more towards Huntington probably gives a power, a good number because they want, they want what Northeast has with us. So business, right?
Are we gonna have a similar cost for thirty-nine Locusts?
Excuse me?
Are we gonna have a similar cost for thirty-nine Locusts if we?
No, thirty-nine Locusts is gonna be a little different.
More, more?
Yes, unfortunate, yes, um, if you want to talk about, I can just give you a quick update, great, uh, so.
We plan next Tuesday, we'll, we'll take up the lease for the thirty-nine Locusts.
Yeah, so, um, thirty-nine Locusts is an all-electric building, heat included.
This is the board of ed?
Yeah, and the way the electric goes in that building is a little challenging because of the way they built it, um, and there's no room for switchgear inside the building, so we have to buy external switchgear, uh, which has going outside the building. Um, once you go outside the building, electricity and cabinets, it gets expensive because you gotta water tighten it, obviously, because of electricity. Um, the good part of that is that one of two things can happen as far as the generator goes, the switchers, I'm estimating a little over a hundred thousand dollars to get that piece done. The generator that we're currently buying, the temporary one, will work there. Um, but also as a backup with the police department, if that generator over there, it would work over there. We can always take the one that's currently at the police department, throw it on a trailer and just park in the parking lot and plug right into it. So we'll have a little versatility there. So I'm not concerned about the generator portion, it's the electrical, the labor and the switchgear is involved to make it work, it's a little, a little bit of a challenge, but we could do it, and, uh, I talked to, uh, Plaza, they're, they're, they're okay with it, reality, so, uh, we'll zero in on that a little bit, we may get electrical engineer involved a little bit on that one too, because it is, it's not our building owned, for one thing, so, um, would I turn that electrical engineer to sign off on what is being done?
So with, we're leased, we're gonna talk about this more next Tuesday, okay?
Yeah.
Bring it up then.
Yeah.
Okay.
At the end of the day, you'll have a police department that will be able to back up power, which is, which they need, obviously, so.
Further questions?
Nope.
So this is for the wastewater treatment plant, a, uh, manual transfer switch, related equipment for the, uh, mobile generator to be used at the wastewater treatment plant. The total cost with contingency is sixty-seven thousand, four fifty-seven. Do I have a motion to prove that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, we got next, he. So the next item we have is the approval, seeking approval for the, uh, blanket purchase orders for starting July first, it's twenty twenty-three budget. Um, this is pretty much, uh, the standards that we've been using the past few years to cover our blanket orders if we exceed our, uh, our request at any given point, we'll come back to the Board of Selectmen to, uh, to ask for next, uh, for additional funds to go on to what the purchase orders. Um, I don't know if you have any questions of it, it's a lengthy list. Uh, there was, I'll, I'll make one note that, um, we added a few vendors, uh, that we've been using. I need backup for a vendor who's doing a boiler, who does our boiler maintenance, whatever, I can't get him to do a repair because he has labor issues and timing, I, I need a little flexibility there, so we're, we're gonna break things up a little bit this year with, uh, not putting all our eggs in one basket with certain vendors. We're gonna share the, share the buildings a little bit with other vendors, and they're all qualified, they've all done work for us for many years.
So just as, as an example on the boiler repairs, it looks like you've got Eastern Mechanical and C V Longo.
Yes.
Each for twenty thousand.
Yes.
What did we have in the budget last year? Was it forty thousand?
It was, it was, yeah, it was up there, yeah. I, I kind of split the difference. Uh, C V Longo is in Springdale, convenient, right here. Uh, Eastern Mechanical is in Danbury. Um, sometimes it's a bit of a challenge, just again, getting people here timely and, uh, and, and the way, I know we had a couple issues with Eastern Mechanical this year, it just didn't have enough guys.
Has there been any significant change, um, from last year's blanket P O?
The only thing that's changed is the dollars might want to buy, but only because the cost of everything is so much more.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I, I, as an example, uh, we just did a pump that was typically thirteen hundred dollars, just cost us almost six thousand for exact same pump that we replaced a few years ago. And then getting it, so you know, you look at a twenty thousand dollar blanket order, well, quarter, we can go with just one repair. Um, our buildings are aging, we have a highway department that's twenty-two years old now, and the pumps, there's a lot of pumps down there, and, uh, we're, we're looking at next year, uh, next year's request to, to model, you know, upgrade a lot of those pumps, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's a little bit of a challenge out there, to be honest with you, yeah, so.
So I had one more question. On the last item, which was the common charges for two twenty Elm, I seem to recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the common charges we originally approved just a few weeks or months ago, didn't that go through December of twenty twenty-two?
Okay, the so the the fiscal year for two twenty, um, Elm Street is January to December.
Okay.
And ours, ours starts July, so this is all new funding coming to us starting July one, so I just want to make sure we are all understood that. I'll give me the full year of approval for the common fees. Now, they may be changed come January.
I keep in mind, we're landlord right now for the chain, so we're getting revenues.
Yeah, there's gonna be some adjustments until Board of Ed actually gets in there, and the thought process in this is that we will uh, pay the common charges in town side, but then Board of Ed, along with the, uh, debt services, including this, will be then, I guess, transferred over us, if that makes sense. So we're kind of a manager administrator of the money, and then it'll be refunded back, so I just.
But this is a full twelve months.
That's a full twelve months, correct.
And for just our share, our owner's interest or the whole building?
Just for our owner's interest, is that, yes, correct.
Okay.
Now, we're also looking, um, there'll be some adjustments along the way, but we also want to make sure we start building capital reserve over there for the future. We don't want to start getting hit down the line, so we're gonna make adjustments along the way, and then any residual ones that are not spent out of that, uh, will, we will go through two twenty Elm Street Committee to make a recommendation to maybe start that capital uh, fund, so to speak, because we know probably in about seven years or three years, you're gonna need a roof, right? So it's, let's plan now for that and not get hit all at once.
Okay, so we just, we're not double counting from what we've already approved.
Right, yeah, we're not double counting it all, no, no, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So are we taking, um, this is just the purchase order requests.
Right.
We are creating blanket purchase orders for building repairs and supply services with a ten percent contingency for a total. with a ten percent contingency for a total cost of five hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven forty-seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, one more. Not gonna get rid of me that easy. The next one's for the contract renewals. And you'll notice on your, your list, we have two types of contract renewals. We're gonna have the proprietary services which cover proprietary equipment that's in buildings, uh, elevators, security systems as such. And then we have our regular PM services. And then the only one that's really in the PM services, as you know, is most of them are under ten thousand dollars. Actually, they're all under ten thousand, except for the one. And that's for the cleaning service. And if you recall, we spoke about this over summer. We had some issues with the cleaning services. And P and M Cleaners is doing a fantastic job. They're a great group. They're local, right here in Norwalk. And um, I'll give them, I'll give the owners credit. They they pay their staff very well, above minimum wage. And I think that's why they retain their staff. And um, we'd like to continue uh, that uh, for another year with them. And we still have the current five-year little piece of it still with the current uh, Jampro, and they'll continue doing the other buildings. And that's working out really well. I think it really worked out well for everybody. No one's our cleaning is going up uh, as far as cleanliness, the buildings have improved. And um, complaints have gone way down and the staffing on for both companies are actually where they need to be and if he's getting done properly.
Are these the folks that do town hall here and?
Yeah, actually, Jampro does town hall now. And they have this whole campus here and they do the train station. The P and M Cleaners is doing basically outside of town, Police Department, Analyst Corps.
Okay.
And then they're doing all the seasonal stuff. And uh, this year, um, we've uh, at the request, I believe of uh, the pool commissioner, whoever's John Howes group over there, we've actually increased the cleaning services for the pool. We have a full-time porter there on a daily basis for eight hours. And I think that's a good thing.
That's in this number?
That's in that, yeah, that's in that too.
That's a good thing.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be nice to have somebody in a blue uniform with their, or their name of the company. Perception is great. People know that the cleaning service is right there, so it'd be an issue. You know, so I think it's good.
Right.
Further questions?
None here.
I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter to service contracts in the total amount of three oh two, nine eighty-three thirty-five, which includes ten percent contingency. Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Who's doing the optional standard mileage rate? Check it. This is an IRS.
Yes, this is very unusual for the IRS to to come out at this time and uh, recommend this increase, but obviously it's their response to what everybody's seeing at the pump. So this is just something that we need to approve. The Board of Selectmen needs to approve.
So they typically don't do this?
Once a year, they do it, but it happens in January.
Right.
So this is a first to come sort of mid-year.
So this is reimbursement for town.
But did we do this in January?
We've done it. Yeah, we, we've been doing it all along.
That's right. Yeah, I thought, yeah.
This is effective July one, we would increase the uh, reimbursement rate for the IRS uh, schedule to from fifty-eight point five cents to sixty-two point five cents for uh, travel um, on town business. I, I move that we approve that.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
How how many um, employees receive um, mileage reimbursements? Yeah.
But I, I wouldn't have a model right now. I can get back.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
I've never done it in five years. I've never done it in five.
I don't do it either.
So like when you go to West Cog, you don't submit it yet. The paperwork can be.
Too much paperwork.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not worth it.
Uh, okay, we moved and we discussed.
Yeah.
Discussion.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. That includes our agenda items. And this is a special meeting, so we have to stick to the agenda. I would just make one comment about the uh, uh, on the playoffs, uh, the town council will meet tomorrow night for public comment. And then again, next, what is the twenty-ninth, Thursday? Twenty-ninth, uh, to for further public comment in a public hearing, because it's a lease, they have to have a public hearing by statute. And um, and then they will vote on the funding and approval of the lease, hopefully.
Which would be the last step.
Last step. We will, on on next Tuesday, on our agenda, we will have the uh, final LOI as well as the lease to recommend to the town council. Um, and we will, still working on that lease, but we should have it on your tablet by tomorrow or Friday or Monday. Uh, so that's uh, again, that's the major thing we want to get over the the hurdle. Um, we will have a full agenda on Tuesday um, for a lot of things that we have to do at year end. That's all I have.
I just said one quick thing as a follow-up to the minutes um, from our last meeting. So um, some good work is being done in terms of research about uh, how other towns are posting the openings for boards, commissions, committees, et cetera. Um, so more to report back uh, to to all of you on this. So um, that's underway. And also, just as a save the date uh, for September fifteenth, we, as you recall, last year in May, we honored those who uh, had served and no, were had stepped down or finished their term for the boards and commissions and committees. And I think about fifty-five people last year in May. So May's come and gone. So we set the date for September fifteenth uh, this year. And again, we have another, maybe fifteen or so.
Who set the date?
We checked with your calendar. So that's the date that worked best for you. And uh, so anyway, so we're gonna do it in September. We've got the um, the museum and historical society again uh, this year. So.
I mean, is this your initiative? This wasn't discussed with me.
This is just a follow-up that the town has done every year and we didn't make it happen this May, so we're gonna do it in September. So and as you know, I I put that together and have been doing it for a number of years. So want to make sure that uh, we're working on this together.
There's to me, okay. Um, anything else? No comments? Okay, I will be adjourned at nine oh nine?
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi.